Roll call by recording secretary?
All members present with the exception of Ted Strathaus.
Opening statement in my chair, I'll skip this. Mister Walden heard it ninety-nine times. Uh consideration of any changes, additions, or removals to the agenda? Comments from citizens?
Not yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes from February eighteenth two thousand seventy-five?
I have a couple. That's right.
Recording in progress.
Six double C.
Six double C.
So it's right before seven, I should say, so seven. So.
Six double C?
Yes, we go to seven and go up two would probably be easier.
There's six.
Oh, I'm sorry, so.
I'm.
I was looking, I know, I was.
Oh, okay, I got it, six double C.
Yep. So occupancy over eight should be determined by.
That's right, okay.
Well, that's our part one.
Yeah.
And um seven A. So it would be um fixed fees per unit. It would not a not a tiered fee, so it'd be uh right, suggested setting the fee per unit. So.
So homestead or not homestead?
So homestead, not homestead would be for exemptions to the fee, so so if you're a home, if you're homesteading on the property. Um so how did I?
Thought it was an exception, we're gonna make it lower.
Low, either either way, either way.
Is that how you wanna phrase that?
So setting the fees per unit at a fixed rate.
Where are we? Oh.
Seven A.
Seven A.
Uh huh.
With, you know, and then with the potential for an exemption or lesser fee for homestead versus non-homestead properties.
Oh yeah, wasn't tiered fees.
Okay.
You chatting, Gabeys?
Nope.
Anybody else submit a questions? There was actually something, I appreciate these minutes, Lisa. Lisha, because before I went to the trustees meeting, I noticed something that I was being a Nazi correctly. Right in the minutes, it's like, oh yeah, that's how that went.
Sorry.
Okay, we're moving on to um rules, oh wait, so I'll retain a motion to approve the minutes.
So. Um that's, yeah.
One second, Jean.
Yes.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, thank you, Jean, sorry.
Jean, could we count on you for a second?
Yes.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Rules of procedure, we're gonna table because Ted's not here and we agreed we wouldn't talk about it unless we were all here. Uh neighborhood development areas, I asked Jason to come um to talk about next steps for this. I know we can't apply until after the trustees and the snack board meets. Um they have their public hearing on April seventh, and this one starts at five fifteen on subdivision. If they approve the subdivision changes, then you can apply for the NDAs, but I asked Jason if we could talk about the map tonight. Yes, we, he's got it, because we had some.
What did you say, I mean will be April what?
April seventh. The first meeting is at five, and that's with just the trustees to talk about standalone flood rates and that one little change we had. Um it was twenty-two point five or something. And then um the second meeting, which starts at five fifteen, is with both boards, and it's the subdivision changes. And then the third public hearing is at five thirty, and that is on the changes we've made so far. Not the ones we're gonna make tonight, but the ones we've made so far in the town zoning, so that's with just the select board, so. I tried to not spread them out over four month, uh three months, but have.
That's great.
A way they could both be there, and then the trustees meeting if they want, they don't have to stay all night. Anyway, so that's happening, if anybody wants to come when it's been postponed. Take it away, Jason.
Okay, so after April seventh, we'll know if the the subdivision uh changes adopted or not. If they do, full scheme ahead with an application. Um the main part after that is really to figure out the map, you know, uh we brainstormed a number of months ago. Um and we basically did, had a similar map to what you're seeing up there. The purple area in the in the middle is the existing village center designation. Uh and then the green parcels surrounding it, kind of in sort of weird shapes, um are the proposed draft ideas for this uh neighborhood development area. The primary benefit of this NDA designation is basically for housing, housing production. Act two fifty exemptions, things like that, so we were trying to think about where in around the village is their water and sewer infrastructure, sidewalks, things like that, where we thought we wanted to see housing developments happen. So this is more or less what we came up with, we ended up looking in a little more detail at the town zoning versus the village zoning. We were, we believe that uh the town zoning isn't quite there yet in terms of the densities and some of these other things that the state's looking for. So we we cut off the section along um Pleasant Street Extension to just basically end the village line, essentially. Uh we thought, let's just do the minimum effort, so to speak, and plot and see if it works, if we can always extend it potentially later down the road. So really, I just wanna check in with you all um on the map, see if there's any changes or questions. The blank spots, you know, so the there are white spots there where you're thinking, what's going on? Um the the application requirements want us to basically exclude the river corridor from it. Um so we can talk a little bit more about that, but that's why part of Pond Street, part of Preservation District, part of along um one hundred South there are white and not green. Um but anyway, I wanna make sure this looks about right and see if there's any changes that folks wanna see before we take those next steps.
I wanna just bring up before I forget that um the select board, we went to the select board and the village trustees with this idea, and showed them the map. Um some of them were not on board with the Commonwealth Avenue one there.
Okay.
That we had with there.
So we should, they, the thought was shrink it?
Yeah.
That's too far up, okay.
They weren't, they weren't, didn't like it that far up.
Okay.
And then the other thing, Rose wanted to bring something up, she and I met about the municipal planning grant the other day, and she had a concern about Andover Street, Rose, did you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, I was concerned about Andover Street because half of it is in the new NDA and that right across the street, it's not. And it is a municipal sewer and water, but they do not have sidewalks over there. And I thought that maybe that was why they were excluded, but I think that if you do one side and not the other, we're gonna have problems.
So there's sidewalks part of the way, I can't remember exactly where they end, they go.
The end of the.
With, you can see them from Pullman, but I I don't remember exactly where.
The end of the edge, yeah.
Um the the main reason, Rose, is that's um either flood plain or river corridor or corridor.
Oh, that makes sense.
Okay, well, I just think that, you know, when people find out, you know, whatever, if they get any benefits from the NDA on one side and not on the other, there might be, you know, some complaining, some problems, whatever.
Yeah, we'll 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 look in the details, make sure it's accurate, but um the state rules are pretty clear, we we do need to exclude those areas, but we'll we'll verify that that's what's going on there, and we'll certainly add them in if we can.
No, I know you, you heard that meeting, does, did anybody have an issue with um the Chemo Heights thing? Or is it, which one, Lawrence Heights, which one is not the controversial one? Which one is the higher one, Chemo Heights?
Yeah, the Andover Chemo Heights, so.
Okay. I know Lawrence Heights has had some controversy with permanent and stuff, and so we stick, we stayed away from that, we talked about Chemo Heights, right?
Yeah, you're talking with a parcel on at the end.
Yeah.
That is the approved, not never improved subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
So what's the green on the far right-hand side?
Wait, over here?
That's Pleasant Street.
Yeah.
Pleasant Street Extension.
Extension.
Oh, I thought, I heard you say we're going down Pleasant Street Extension.
Not on the riverside?
We we wanted to cut it off, we we started the discussion months ago, yes, let's include it.
Right.
Um.
Because of side parts.
And then then we cut it off because of the river corridor and flood zone, um part of it. And what's left is maybe, you know, we should talk about, is it worth keeping, what's left? We ended up then um cutting off the town portion of it because the zoning wasn't quite right from a density point of view. So we had this kind of interesting looking sliver, and I don't know if that's worth keeping or not.
It's right below the railroad easement, all those parcels.
Right, right below that railroad, exactly.
How, so we're within.
And it's set back from the road because of the flood issue.
E- yeah. Yeah.
So it's a little weird.
So we're excluding a lot of areas within the NDA because of the river corridor, does that give us density elevity elsewhere outside of the NDA? If there's like a perfect parcel? Cause the water and sewer in this town goes pretty far and wide comparatively, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we talked about, like, if you can see that little cursor thing, um, you know, some of these spots back in here.
Yeah.
We we can talk about that for sure. Um at some point, you can start to get farther, and is it walkable, and is it steep, and you know.
Yeah. And it's. Yeah.
You know, there, so again, we were sort of thinking, let's let's start smaller and get a slam dunk if we can, but whatever you want.
Do you, do you think this will ever exceed the two-year, like sunset, is is that, has that changed, the language on that changed? Whereas it's still pretty strict to a two-year timetable?
So there, you know, there's really two ways at this. Short answer, no. Yes, though, I mean, so if you apply for this NDA, applications can be submitted up until October, and then no more, done. So let's say we get it in late spring, you get approved, you're good for basically a year and a half-ish at that point.
Yeah.
It does sunset, but you know, we're gonna be working with you soon about our regional plan. And my thinking is we'll we'll basically have a replica of this on our regional plan.
Okay.
We're we're basically kind of doing the homework now.
For.
That'll help us to do our regional plan, so yeah, I I I think it's gonna stay, more or less.
So it's part of like, excuse me, Act one eighty-one?
One, right, sunset unit.
Those are the way.
So. Okay, so under Act one eighty-one, um which the legislature passed last year, they're changing stuff. So um the state designation program as we know it today is is good for next two years roughly. And after that, how we have our future land use map is basically gonna get automatic designation. So what I'm trying to, what we're trying to do here is get you your NDA, and then it will last through our regional plan. If that makes sense.
Yeah. Did you do something interrupt to do?
No, I I thought that was Pleasant Street Extension, but I misunderstood what he said. But I I kinda think we might as well keep it, I mean.
Yeah.
It gives us more opportunities.
Okay, so we're gonna keep this Pleasant Street Extension area.
Especially if we're gonna shorten Commonwealth.
I'm gonna look at um, we're gonna look at this to verify the flood thing.
Do you know what the thoughts were on the Commonwealth comments?
I don't.
I don't recall that, obviously.
You can look back in the minutes, I looked back in the minutes, I think it was Brett that had an issue with that, Brett Sanderson.
So what do you, what do you folks think about, so most of this is along Guild Terrace, where my little cursor is.
Uh huh.
Now this is Commonwealth here. So you don't know, you know, is it here that they don't like? Or is it maybe here that they don't like?
Is the further off stuff?
Maybe don't like.
Yeah, was the further off stuff, isn't that pretty, uh not very walkable to the center way up there?
I mean, I've not been up there.
Yeah. Yeah, there's sidewalk doesn't go that far up, it goes to like the substation area. There is that subdivision, I I can't remember the name of it now, but there's been vacant lots in there for forever, it's.
Are you talking on the right hand side?
On the white?
Yeah.
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 I I can't remember what it is.
Like, uh I'm gonna try and hold up here. It is uh Old Village Lane and Country Ridge.
So I think part of our thinking a number of months ago were, hey, where can we build houses, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I think the thought was, well, there are some vacant lots up there.
Right.
Why not?
But I'm happy to change this if you'd like.
Well, what if it just went as far as that, as far as the sidewalk, yeah.
So where the sidewalk ends?
The sidewalk. Shall so withstand, yeah.
I mean, yeah, conceptually, a sidewalk could be extended, you know, and it could be extended by the developer.
Extremely steep right after that, too, some stations.
Okay. Okay, so do we want, we wanna shorten this up?
And narrow.
Is that what folks think?
I I just think it'll get approved easier, cause that was one thing that they had an issue with.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay.
And is that what happens, Jason, before we submit the application, I mean, as long as it goes through the subdivision changes? Does the map have to be approved by the, is just the village trustees, cause you said you stepped stayed away from the town?
Right, we're.
Water sewer areas?
We're trying to keep this within the village, um
Yeah.
And I have to remind myself what, but yeah, I believe the trustees do need to formally approve the application, so.
Okay, okay, so to that, the trustees behind.
Yeah, the map, we we didn't need their buy-in on on the map.
I'll try to get into their main meeting for that, then. Hopefully, if everything goes wrong. Um where does, Ryan, where does the village end and the town begin on Commonwealth, otherwise no one is worth out.
Um not that far up.
I think it's up here, but I could be wrong.
Way up there?
I think so.
I think it's just below North Ridge Road. Because I know Country Ridge and Old Village Lane, I think parks better in the village, all of the city's around.
So Guild, like what I'm hearing, Guild Terrace, we're gonna kind of reduce it a little bit, tighten it up closer to where the sidewalk ends, right? And then we're.
Commonwealth, not Guild Terrace.
Commonwealth.
Yeah, not Guild Terrace.
Commonwealth.
Yeah.
Guild Terrace doesn't have sidewalk.
So Guild Terrace, so Guild Terrace, we leave, we want to leave Guild Terrace as it is on this map?
Uh Guild Terrace has no sidewalks, they don't move.
Guild Terrace.
What do you guys think about Guild Terrace, they didn't say anything about it at that many.
Yeah, that's, I feel like that should, that's probably a village right in there.
Right.
Guild Terrace.
Okay.
Isn't, isn't where that green ends, isn't that like all those houses on Commonwealth though? Or are those small lots farther up?
Yeah.
So those are, so.
Cause that's like before the substation.
We did, we did this with Ryan in mind because he had said there was a lot of vacant lots up there.
Yeah. Wasn't the development up that road up higher? It's not that far up, really.
We can, you know, we can do a little bit more homework, I feel like that is where those houses are.
Yeah.
And then the bigger lots beyond are, you know, some of the steeper stuff, but we can certainly take another look at that.
Okay.
That is development, yeah.
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah, that, that's where it is.
Yeah, and I think, you know, where where the green stops is where the development stops, I think.
Like right, like substations like there.
Substations have a little sliver.
Right here?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so this is all pretty, pretty walkable, right?
Yeah, so the 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 village line is just south of Nor- it's North Ridge Road.
Okay.
So all of um.
Yeah.
Old Village Lane and Country Ridge Road is all in the village.
So you know, again, we can look at a little more detail, but it sounds like maybe no changes there on the map. Are there any other spots that we ought to be looking at and more, more adding?
We can just start everything except the flood, which can be added.
I bet, I think that's, I I think that's set well. My whole thing is I know that there's gonna be an errant par- parcel that's outside of that, that could be primed. But it is in the town, so that is gonna be the stick there, is that it's under town zoning, which doesn't qualify. It would need a lot of work, so it makes sense that it would.
Well, you know, we're we're applying to change the town zoning, so that that's always a thing.
Yeah.
Um and you can always change it anyway if you get the granted on. And then the other thing is, you know, if you apply and you get this thing, and we discover, whoops, you know, there's a few that we missed, we can just add those onto our map.
Oh.
Okay.
So I I think there's a couple ways of this thing.
Yeah.
We look behind like Dorsey Park, Dorsey Park, Ditherland, cause that's pretty walkable
It's gonna evolve.
To walk to the park and then walk downtown, take Ditherland, like behind that park.
Parker Avenue. Yeah, but there's the rivers there, yeah, yeah.
Oh yeah, there's a river there.
Yeah, there is gonna be a lot of the river corridor, like Parker, but but that that river corridor though is one of the few, just I don't know if you've seen it, but it was all armored, all the banks were armored by the mills that were there.
I can really see that.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so that's one where, I don't know what the risk, you you know, that's one of those ones where is it the exception to a river corridor? For like erosion and stuff like that, or?
It didn't show up. Yeah, I'd feel better, you know, kind of doing a little bit more homework on that, but it didn't show up. Behind Dorsey Park, there was something that did show up, so again, we can look at a little more, you know, just make sure we capture it.
Yeah.
There's the brook that comes off, Jewel Brook too, well, there's another one that comes down from the dam.
Yeah.
Yeah, that must be around there.
I know the roads that really flooded, like the whole banquet, and that's what flooded, was that little brook.
Yeah. I kind of think overall, time is more of an essence than the fine tuning right now, if you give it, yes.
Yeah, especially if Jason can do it together.
Yeah, I can fine tune it kind of as we go.
Plus, if you're not putting a town lead, and it wasn't anybody on the trustees that had an issue with Commonwealth, I'm pretty sure it was Brett, and I just ream it up looking back at the minutes. Did you have anything else, Jason, that on the NDA's?
I think that's the main thing, so I think um what we've not yet worked on and what we can work on is the application itself.
Yeah.
That shouldn't be a huge effort, most of it's that checklist thing that we have already looked at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we can start to, we'll we'll look at the map in a little more detail, make sure we get it as close to right as we can get it. And we'll start working on the application, and then we'll see what happens. Two for seconds, and then we'll see my head.
Maybe you might can meet before our April meeting and work on the application and bring it to this board and see if everybody agrees?
Yeah, at your April meeting, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, before our April meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
May Rose too.
Just work.
When is our April meeting?
Um they, I don't have that far. Are you awake?
Your April meeting would be on April fifteenth.
I'm, I mean, no, I might not.
April fifteenth.
It's early.
Okay, so I'll make sure to go.
It's your third.
Next month's agenda.
It is the third, yeah.
Derek, can I ask one question?
Yeah.
It's about a parcel on on Guild. Um it's owned by the, the Guild, just the the big parcel on the left-hand side.
This one?
Yeah. Why, was that excluded for any specific reason? Cause that's that's a huge parcel there.
I don't know, Ryan, do you remember one way or the other? I I guess I'm looking at you, cause you have pretty good handles.
No, yeah, I'm trying to think.
Is it flat?
What parcel we're talking about or something?
No, it's not, it's not that.
It's this flat, this one, it's like cursor.
It's owned by the homes up there, or still kind of something, and there was, and I have to subdivide it.
Is it on the side of the door? No, it's.
Is it on the parking lot?
Yeah, the left-hand, with a, I almost forget, it's Guild Home.
So it's like a seven, seven point thing.
Guild Home, zoning up would be on your left.
It's on the left.
Is the Guild, the Guild owns parcels.
Yeah.
They own a lot, they own a big chunk of land, but they did subdivide a little square out of it just recently.
Yep.
Oh, that must be that.
That's why I'm running away, cause that's, that's a huge parcel.
It's a good question, I don't know, um.
So.
In that precedent for housing, I'm based on, you know, our, you know, spots, it's, it's, just just a question.
Sure, there are houses.
Is that something you want us to take a look at?
Yes, I'm not.
Okay.
So then that does run into the question, though, does the entire parcel have to be in, or just can a portion of a parcel be in?
They generally like the full parcel.
Yeah.
I'd like it to be continuous.
But you know, there might be, there might be some wiggle room there. We can certainly explore it and.
So and I.
Not included if we decide, if you decide to add.
Well, and then also moving that bubble up, no, I know it's moving up north on Commonwealth, but that also includes that subdivision to the right, the County, um County Ridge Road. And Old Village Lane subdivision.
Yeah, we had talked about that as I remember, and I think part of it was, you know, how walkable is it, you know, I mean, I don't, happy to add,
Yeah. And it's.
Happy to add things in, but it does get back to, I think Brett's question too about how far up.
It's really, it's really steep.
Once you get up Guild Terrace, like to the Guild home, it kind of flattens out, but that first part is.
It's not walkable.
I, I.
Yeah, but it's, yeah.
It's.
Well, so.
Gets little kids on bikes walking it.
No, I mean, I'm, you know, just looking, right after the last house on Commonwealth on the right, there's a vacant parcel two and a quarter acres that connects right to Old Village Lane. It's actually one of the vacant lots on Old Village Lane.
Oh wow.
So not necessarily having to go all the way up to the egress of the subdivision, but having a pedestrian cut, like a cut through, obviously, that's ton of things would have to happen in order for that to be possible, but it's not, it's all like the, they would have to go all the way up to the act to where the curb cut is for the subdivision, all those parcels lying Commonwealth road on that side. I it's, I just see there vacant lots hooked up to utility, I don't know why we're avoiding them.
Is there any um, is there any connection from that Old Village Road um to the, to the mountain bike trails?
So that. So actually, and actually because they they wanted the town to buy this, it actually abuts um up behind the school.
Yeah.
Right.
So for pedestrian walkways and stuff, I mean, you have a handful of parcels that directly about the the municipal property.
So theory, you can have a walking path or whatever.
Yeah.
You could.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, so. Um.
So what's everybody else think, is that something else we should be looking at here?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think Ryan's gonna.
We always have a shortcut between like the Guild Home up there, where that Guild Home is, and the parking lot down to the cemetery.
Yes.
Yeah.
To the left, there's a path you could kind of see, yeah.
So I, I think if you can see my little cursor here, you know, we're we're probably talking about this area right here.
Yep, pretty much right, exactly right there.
So, you know, and I don't know if this gets into the Brett concern, but you know.
Well.
But I, you know, sure, let's look at it, let's make, let's add it in if it makes sense.
And right where you're, right at the top of your map, that is North Ridge Road, and that is right above, right where your cursor is. East and west, that is the village line, literally right there.
And does anybody know what this lot is here?
That lot is.
I can't tell you what they.
Yours, it's yours, isn't it?
No, that's not mine. Um that's owned all by the same, that's about seven separate lots in there, but there's no access from Commonwealth, cause you have the river.
There's a huge alley there.
Huge alley, that goes straight up.
Okay. So that doesn't really make sense to include, perhaps?
I thought you couldn't own a lot with no access.
It's a question, I, I don't know how this guy lie, but I don't know why, but his access would have to be off of Guild, the top part of Guild, like he'd have to buy one of those homes. Or.
Get an easement or whatever.
Yeah, some sort of easements, uh I have a parcel of that, so that upside down T is my parcel there. You know, the road to mine.
I was gonna, yeah.
Okay.
He he's really glad locked in there, so.
Do we want to include that lot with, if we're including the other stuff across the street?
Yeah, I think we should go north on Commonwealth right to the village line.
Okay.
I just don't think we should ignore what Brett said down.
Yeah, but I think it's.
I think.
Cause that's why we went to them.
Sorry, I think that lot that you're talking about has um comes off of Whispering Pines. And um one of the, and the guy who bought it at one time, I don't know if it's the same guy, he wanted to put an access down to it cause it goes down to the water.
It does connect up to the Spring Pines.
Well. It not as, not as say, it would still, there would have to be a right of way, which there may be, but it's not, it's not, doesn't get it on the map.
Yeah. It doesn't go all the way to that road, but yeah.
Uh it parallels it all the way to the end, but there's still parcels in between.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is it contiguous?
It's contiguous.
Was it compatible?
It's contiguous until you get up to Whispering Pines, but I think there's one parcel before Whispering Pines.
Yep, that created that, that cuts it off from the, from the road, but.
Yeah.
It's a big, big vacant parcel.
I don't know that guy would have that access without building a bridge over the river, honestly.
Rose, do you have any other ideas for this NDA map you wanna bring up?
Um no, I think um, you know, I was looking at the kind of the bubble that um Jason put around it and I I'm wondering if that's just he didn't wanna go outside of that bubble because um over on West Hill Street, there's a couple parcels that have not been included. Um there's, the first one is on the left-hand side, they're all residential going up the village to the village line. Um but the other side is commercial, and I don't know if that matters. But it's within the bubble.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can talk about it. I think at the time we were thinking it's steep and narrow and not very nice and walkable, but. Whatever. I'm I'm open. If there are other, if you want us to look at that in a little more detail, we can do that.
Well, I was only thinking until, you know, whether you have the your your bubble line because that's still um fairly. Straight and um. But then it's really steep after that.
That's also.
Yeah.
And that's also out of the village.
So the, just for clarity, this bubble is um really for reference, so. Right now, so right, it's basically a quarter mile buffer surrounding the village's, just village center designation. Right now, that's got intermac to fifty exemption in the bubble. But we're trying to refine the bubble. And so we can go, you know, kind of you're, we're extending it in some areas, we're shrinking it in others. That's okay.
Okay, gotcha.
And we can certainly extend it up that way if we think it makes sense, but I I don't know. I was thinking it was too steep and stuff, but I'm happy.
Once you get to the railroad tracks, it's really steep.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's no commercial past the railroad tracks.
Is it less walkable than Commonwealth or Gil Terrace?
Both, same.
That's a good question.
That's why we stayed away from Green Hill.
So.
I was gonna say, everything around the village doesn't have to be steep.
Yeah.
It is.
So we've got West Hill up to the railroad tracks.
Yep.
And that's where we cut it off.
Yeah. Pretty much pass there. I think you're in town anyway.
So.
Yeah, fine.
And the. Yep, so. So the whole, I, you know, just looking at the blue lot. So only a portion of the blue lot is in that bubble, so that parcel right there.
That's this one right here, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we talked about that, didn't we? But we thought maybe, and I think we talked about this one too, or eh.
Yeah.
Maybe not.
Yeah.
If I'm remembering right.
Yeah, we did. Okay, so we we get, got some direction for Jason to tweak the map a bit?
Yeah.
And again, nothing's written in stone. We can always change it further. So we'll, we'll look at this a little bit more, add a few parcels up along that Commonwealth Gil Terrace link. Talked about it. Check the flood stuff down there on the Rock South and bring it back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks a lot, Jason, for being here. All right, moving on to Town of Love Loze zoning bylaws. First thing I'm gonna look at is two twenty one point five limitations and exceptions.
Problem.
Check the stuff over there. Twenty one point five. Basically with this, I kind of looked at some of the other day. Um, we we did a look at it, but I was thinking with that, we could just make the same changes we made to the village, just to this. Two twenty one point five, two twenty one point five. Just waiting for my slow word open. You guys are looking at it anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what are we talking about? Changing the town to village?
Yeah, what we changed in the town to the village.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is make the same changes, yeah.
To the town.
Yep.
Are we aware of that?
I have a question for Jason. What exactly does building bulk mean?
Building bulk?
Yeah.
Man, I'm looking at what you're looking at, but um I think it's referring to sort of like the the size and the shape and the height of the building.
That's what I thought. I just thought that was. Cause it says location, size, height, building bulk, yards, boards, so that's.
Okay, so the only thing we're talking about is in the first sentence, that A.
Yep.
Adding shall be subject to site plan review and the additional standards specified section. Five ten point three by the Development Review Board. So that was all we would do is add that. Everything else is.
Where is that getting at?
That's in two twenty one point five, the village.
A first.
A. Limitations and exemptions first paragraph.
Okay.
After the word uses, it's in red and then it's in red in the paperwork.
Oh, I didn't get it.
Didn't get it.
So it says.
She, you you have to go down there.
This.
Yep.
It's, yeah.
So what's, what's.
Mine isn't.
Yeah, you didn't.
Oh, it's on red.
Either.
Oh, it's because you're in the town, so go back two pages.
We're in the village.
So.
Okay.
We're taking, we're taking the red text from the village two twenty one point five.
Okay, there you go.
And adding that to the town, two twenty one point five.
Okay. Yeah, I've got it up there now. Actually, it's in green in mine. But when Rose and I, now we changed it all to the same color to be consistent. Okay, what's this emergency shelters thing? That's also there.
That's a new state law thing.
Yeah. Okay, so we have it. So we need to add that also in seven that we added, the emergency shelters thing, we need to add that to the town.
Yep.
Oh, there it is. It's not, I lived in on here.
Yeah, it's not, it shouldn't be. It's highlighted on mine. So if somebody wants to make a motion to make the same changes to the town.
Are there any more that we need to go through?
No, there's no more. Cause I have the original, I have the original document and this has all the changes that we made. But we're working on village.
On the village.
I will make a motion to make changes to the town zoning to reflect the village zoning wording. In A, section two two one. Point five A. And section two two one point five A seven. Emergency shelters.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? See if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this is now village and town zoning. Just add that at the top.
Yep.
Okay, the next section is two twenty, two fifty five administrative review. And what I noticed about these when I checked them over was it doesn't exist yet in the town. Two fifty five. Cause we added that whole section. So at the bottom, I wrote town administrative review doesn't exist yet. So this section is something we added to the village. That I think we should also add to the town. What do these guys go away? They're in my way. Okay, I just moved, oh shit. Sorry, I'm talking myself. Okay, so two fifty five. Is everybody getting that?
Yeah. Well.
Administrative review.
The village R C district. For applicability, what would, what would it be for the town?
What do you mean?
The zoning administrators authorized to review and approve a change from existing retail use to a different retail use.
Oh, yeah, so we would have to change that word.
Within the village R C district. I don't see how that applies to the town.
Yeah, are there villi, are there um R Cs in the town? Are there R C districts in the town?
Ask Rose.
Rose, are there R C districts in the town? Are they only exist in the village?
Yeah, I think there's, well, it depends on which ones we're talking about. If you go to um. Out, out of. Route one hundred. South.
Yeah.
There is R C districts. Um, also, if you want to include the mountain. Um, any of their retail shops that they have at the mountain or anything else that might be built up there, there we do have a loft up there. And um so it it depends on if those, if you want to include those or not.
So okay, okay, so we would have to to put this into the town zoning, we would have to change that word village to town. Basically.
Right, I still have section two two one point five up, so.
Oh, oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry about that. We had to go back to zoom and change that.
So that means you'd also be adding the mountain recreation district, right?
Yeah, you're right. So we'd have to add that also besides R C district. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Bye, Jason.
Bye, Jason.
Got that open now and share that.
So the R C district and mountain recreation.
We're in there now? Yep. All right, so when we change this for the town, we need to say, I'll put it in parentheses and then document with that. Um, village town.
R C.
R C. Mountain. Is there anything commercial in the lakes? Lake District?
No, I think it's the Sugar House.
Is there, is Jackson Gore? Commercial stuff included in this? Jackson Gore District?
Turn the mountain.
Turn the mountain.
You're part of the mountain districts. Okay, so one of the districts we need to, town, R C, mountain.
Recreation.
Recreation?
Mountain Recreation District, yeah.
Mountain Recreation District. Are there any other districts that have commercial?
You can just add the districts like Lake District in case somebody, you know, wants to change like um Tara, the restaurant that's out there now.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody wants to just change it to something else, you know?
Yep.
Similar to a restaurant.
Do we have them all now, Rose? If we have town.
I'm sorry?
Do we have them now, all of them now for the town for this document? If we say town, R C, mountain, recreation district, lakes district? Does that include everything? Will we find a commercial in the town zoning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
No, thank you. No, thank you.
There is an industrial.
I was wondering about that, the industrial park. Would the industrial park fit in here? Retail, is that the valleys?
Yeah, the industrial park is only, um, there's the industrial park across the street from Jackson Gore entrance.
Yeah.
And then there's the industrial area, which is all up in um the the.
Bottom.
Badris.
Bottom.
Tell them. And then um there's the valleys. And. So we just want a treatment plan.
So we have to say industrial districts too? Should we just add industrial districts too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I got town, R C, mountain, recreation district, industrial districts and lakes district.
Yeah.
Looks like there's several industrial. Districts. Okay, were there any other changes? That we need to, is anything, is anything else that's talking to speak to just village?
There's also a Jackson Gore Recreation area on the zoning map. I don't.
Or mountain.
Really know what that encompasses.
Ryan said it was part of the mountain recreation district.
I'm just looking at the map and there is a s- separate.
Oh, no, that's a specific.
Yeah, they went and got their own district. I didn't remember that about that vote. So we add that Jackson Gore district. Jackson Gore Recreation.
Recreational. Jackson.
I wouldn't add it.
No?
No, because they petitioned for that district and if you look at the zoning, it's specific as to what is allowed and what isn't allowed.
Okay, get to know.
Yeah. I mean, you guys can decide, but I'm just saying, you know, if you look at the zoning, that's exactly what a petition for.
Exactly, okay. All right, so it looks like that looks good now? Does everybody agree that that will be town zoning? In the town? Okay, I'm just gonna put in town up here so I don't forget to make something up. All right.
The only other one I'm seeing is proprietary municipal district, which I'm assuming is town owned land, so.
Okay. Did you ever know what I said, Rose?
The proprietary municipal district, which I assume is town owned property?
That's, yeah, that's just like the ball parks and um. They're not gonna really do any retail out there, so. But um.
Just.
I'm just.
Up to you guys.
Dorsey dinners. Dorsey dinners.
That's what these are called. Okay, we're moving on to two sixty, which is general standards.
Need a motion for that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes. Thank you, Jane. Motion to um make the changes we just made to Act, to section two twenty, two fifty five.
Do you want?
Adding administrative review section for the town.
I'll make a motion to add an administrative review section for the town based on the village. Wording for districts, R C district. The mountain recreational district, the lake district and the industrial districts.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? See if I'm saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, I'm bringing up two sixty here. It's very, very many internet works here. Okay, so conditional uses, two sixty village, this is what it looks like in the. What we have for the village and this is what it, this is what it looks like at the, in the town. And those sections at the bottom of the town, one to six are now part of the one we just adapted. About the zoning administrator.
Yeah.
So that's why we deleted them in the village because we added that whole other section with them in the.
So we can take this out.
Yeah, I think this two sixty could replace this two sixty easily. If you want to look through those.
I bet it's.
The zoning administrator things to make sure everything was covered in the other one. I briefly looked it over.
What about the time limitations thing there?
Time limitations, so that changed.
It was changed up there? It's not mentioned, I see it.
What do you, which one are you talking about?
In the town zoning, the before you, it went numbers one through six. It says the zoning administrator, subject to the time limitations of two twenty four of the re- relevant regulations, may approve and blah blah blah. And that, oh, that's all part of the bottom one then?
Yeah, that's all part of the one we just approved.
Okay.
To put into the town zoning. Did you have a chance to look that over, Rose? I'm pretty sure everything that. That we left in the village, we left it there and deleted the stuff that's in the town because it's now part of two uh fifty five.
Yeah, I I did and that's fine.
Okay.
So just adopt the two sixty village language, is that what we're looking at for conditional use?
Yeah.
And totally mix this other section.
Right. Ryan, do you have a chance to look it over? What do you think?
Um, yeah, I think it looks like everything's covered.
Okay, I guess I'll entertain a motion to to do that. I'll do it. I'll make a motion to replace Act, section two sixty, um, the village, section two sixty, replace it into the town zoning. Town zoning, section two sixty.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? No, we are racking this up, man. Okay, affordability requirements, those changed a lot, as you guys can probably remember, and it changed a lot in the um village. Because the state changed them a lot. So we're gonna take a look at that, two sixty, town and village. No, two ninety.
Two ninety, yeah.
Two sixty, I'm gonna stay on it. Double check that. Two ninety. Yeah, that's two sixty, I pointed it out. There it is, section. Yeah, that's two sixty, there is section. And then I'm gonna see where the town is, there's the town, oh, there's a town, we came from the same page, okay.
It's the same?
Does it look the same?
No, it's a little different under number one. In the village, it says a minimum of fifteen percent fully units. And in the town, it just says fifteen percent, not a minimum.
The village is the more accurate state information that was changed during Act two sixty, in Act forty-six. Yeah, we actually were, I don't know, Brian, were you in the board when we did this? We added this, this affordability thing, it had never been there before. Fifteen percent had to be, um, affordable. We added that like years and years, two thousand nineteen, we added that. I think one of the only people that noticed was, um, what's his name, Wendy, Wendy Reeves' husband? Ted Reeves?
Oh, yeah.
He knows straight away, because that's his job to know all the regs.
So we want to replace the, the, the town number two with the village wording?
Yeah.
About additional affordability.
Right. I think everybody's just looking at it for nature, I know, and they're all the same.
And so replace two?
Yeah.
Replace two and add a minimum to one.
Right.
Cut, cut that.
Can't we just replace the whole language?
Yeah, because, the only thing, because zoning and flood hazard regulations amended.
So you want to just totally replace the, the town with the, the new village?
That's what we're proposing, I know I'm pretty, we can already get hold of that. Mr. Allen, I was thinking about you with this, and it's all housing projects comprising ten or more units. You said Boston was nine?
Uh, anything above nine, you have to.
Yeah.
Do that, yes.
So twenty percent in Boston?
They, they just changed it, um, to down, now it's six, but it was nine, so the current may have lowered that down to anything above six.
What was it, twenty percent of those?
Yeah, twenty percent.
What about in the last paragraph? In addition, all areas served by both municipal sewer and water infrastructure, there are areas in the town that get municipal water and sewer.
Yes.
Yes. I just wanted to double check.
No, no, yeah.
That's a great one, yeah.
It's good to double check.
I think, yeah, we can just replace.
Yeah.
Town with village.
Yeah.
Me too.
You made that a motion, right?
Yes.
I'll second that. You want to vote for it? Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, see, I told you I'd get a sign here. Four seven three, it's likely four seven, we're not going yet, but we're close.
Depends on how many citizens comments we get.
So many citizens here, maybe here, I'm like. Okay, so, um, I know you guys, last week when I showed you these sections, you're like, that's a lot, but they, they went fast.
They did.
I'm not sure the next set will go that fast. But, um, alright, other business, board member comments?
I have one.
Yeah, do you?
I, as all of us do, we sit in a lot of meetings in this room. Can, can we put some new mapping up there?
That would be nice, wouldn't it?
Yeah, maybe.
Yes.
Um, that, that, because a lot of people look at that, believe it or not, and was it nineteen eighty-eight?
Oh, my God.
Maybe it's not that old, but it's pretty old. And so I thought it would be cool to, maybe, Jared, I know he has a lot on his plate, but maybe he could switch those out.
Rose, is that something Jared could do?
No.
No, no, no timeline.
You guys probably. No, that's something, that's, that's something the select board would have to.
Yeah.
You know, pay fair of.
I wonder if Jason's business would do, I know they have those huge printers and stuff. They give us more modern maps.
Maybe Noah, maybe Noah could ask that question, that is.
Why do you think, Ryan, is there one?
We have, we have maps.
Is there one, put them up here instead of that stuff?
Yeah.
I'll put, I'll put them.
We could put like the street maps up.
Anything, anything.
Anything that's not for two thousand.
Jesus.
Yeah, we got maps, those can go away.
Okay, that's it for me.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah. Um, so, thank you for having me, I look forward to really, uh, being part of the conversations, I feel like I've been coming to these for a long time and, uh, I, part of the reason I got on the select board and involved with this stuff is I feel like we have an opportunity to drive Ludo in a direction, I feel like in the, in the past, for better or worse, things have just kind of happened and, um, we're, you know, dealing with day-to-day stuff, um, but prime example, Jean, we got these maps up here, we have these plans and all that, and I don't see a whole lot of like, you know, we, we develop stuff and there's not a lot of, not, not for lack of effort or anything, but, um, the action items don't always come, come to fruition, or, or we feel like, ah, we're just bringing stuff in and dealing with that, and it's something I see on the select board as well, just, you know, reactive and, and all that, so. Um, in preparation, I just took a quick look at our town plan from, I think it was twenty eighteen, it was adopted. Um, and brief summary of our vision. Ludo envisions itself as a small New England town with a strong sense of community, surrounded by healthy natural environment, including forest and mountains, agriculture landscapes, and historic village center. The town aims to foster a strong diverse economy while maintaining a scenic, maintaining its scenic beauty, outdoor recreation opportunities, and high quality of life. Um, so it just got me thinking of like, everything that, you know, and I think this, this board really has the, one of the biggest driving factors to where Ludo's headed and where, where things end up in the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. Um, and I took a quick peek at the goals that were outlined, um, in that past, um, uh, town plan. Um, review update zoning subdivision bylaws, coordinate with the Wyndham, uh, and Windsor Housing Trust. Work with neighboring communities for broadband, identify existing buildings with flood erosion, um, a bunch of flood stuff, bunch of housing stuff, some of it, I feel like definitely was tackled, a few things that I think maybe just weren't enacted on are, you know, coordinating with the Wyndham, uh, and Windsor County Housing Trust to promote existing programs. Um, the promote tax credit programs for property owners, um, that, with eligible properties, um, and then the big one was consider providing tax incentives for long-term rentals, provide better housing options. Um, and that's some stuff that I feel like, you know, do a lot of the zoning things, but where can we, you know, I think of the Potbelly Pub that was for sale for years, I feel like, um, could have been a great opportunity for a housing project. Um, the proposed hotel, then maybe condos up on Andover, um, like where are the opportunities, and I don't know, I don't know if it's something this, this group does, or you present it to the suburb, hey, this is what we want to do. Uh, or the village of like, hey, we want to promote these things, because there are, there are opportunities where like, hey, like, we want this properties coming up, we don't really want another condo complex, or we, you know, we, we want to improve this area and being proactive, and I, I feel like the, you know, this tax credit incentive is a great idea of, hey, like, this is the project we want to see, and I don't know if it's something we put up bid, or just like, this is opportunities that we want to see in Ludo, and really, instead of letting things go through zoning and DRB and all that, and opposing things that maybe is not best interest of the town, going a step ahead, like, this is what we want to see here. When that guy comes in to see Rose for the first time, like, hey, let's, let's flag these people, invite them in, and like, hey, this is what we can do, how can we work with you to, to promote this, um.
I, I, I want, I love what you're saying, and I've said for a long time to Ryan and to others that that this board does a great job, but without a facilitator, um, a town manager, um, a town planner, a grant writer, without that person to lead exactly what you're saying, it's difficult, but not impossible, and it's great what you're saying.
Well, you have a great grant writer now, we have Cherry.
Yeah.
You find a grant and she helps you through the whole process, because you know, I've been working with her on this municipal planning grant.
Yeah.
Don't work with her on a tree grant, they didn't get it, but they were trying to get trees planted all along the Stark District.
Right.
And to get the grant, there's only like, I think it was fifteen thousand dollars or something, it wasn't a lot of money.
But, but somebody needs to really help the project, like some of the ones, from the beginning. You know, just say, oh, gee, here's something we can develop into something for the town.
So you have to look at towns that have created clear-cut incentives for developers to build specific types of properties. That means getting rid of all the red tape. That means the town, if you, if you're a developer and you want to come into Ludo, and you want to build what we want you to build, we're gonna do everything, it's gonna cost, we waive priorities. We're gonna go to bat with you at the state frac two fifty if we have to, or you are gonna incentivize development, like, and this is more of a statewide, the state should be begging developers here, not, the opposite's happening within the legis, in the legislation, in here in town, too. So if you want to build mixed-use housing with, with affordable housing units, we should be, please, come, we want to work with you, the red tape starts to go away. We're, we are incentivizing developers to build that type of construction here, that's not happening. I don't think we know what a certain type, you know, what type of constru, what type of development is that, that we desire and want? That would fit that bill for them to say, yeah, we're gonna work, we waive fees, we want to fast-track this, this project, we want to get rid of as much red tape as possible. That, that's not happening here at all. If anything, any change of any kind is, is really looked at with tons of scrutiny, and it, and it deter, it deters, deters any developer as soon as you, you come in, you have one, a couple of conversations with folks, and it's kind of, it, it's very, it seems like it's very negative. So they're gonna walk, I'm gonna take, I'm not gonna invest here. They don't seem to want me here. So how do we get, how do we change that narrative so that we?
Rose, why is your opinion up?
Rose, you want to add? To the conversation?
Yeah, I just, you know, uh, listening to what Ryan says, sounds like, you know, we're like snarling at them as they walk in the door, but one of the things that we can't forget is that so much of our land is in the flood area or river corridor. And that's really hard to say to somebody, go ahead, do what you want, because the flood people and FEMA would, you know, they've come down on us so hard, and they have threatened in the past about taking away our NFIP, which is all the insurance that all the people hold in the flood area. And, um, Noah mentioned the Potbelly Pub. And that also has some flood problems on it, we really want to rebuild, and we, we are all for carrying it down and rebuilding, that building needs it, but it, and it has all that land in the back also, which is great parking. But, um, you know, it, we talk to our flood people and they just have so many rules and regulations that it scares the people that want to build or want to buy, that's the problem.
Yeah. So thinking about what Noah just said, and, and I thought this for a while, and I think I brought it up a year, maybe two ago. Many boards, when they like take a time during the year, like maybe the summer or whatever, when it's not so busy, and do a retreat, and they say, what are our goals for this year? And I think with Noah reading these goals, I would love to see this board do a retreat where no businesses transaction, transacted, but we just look at the goals of what do we want to focus on in the upcoming year? And pick a few, instead of just, it, sometimes it feels like a little bit that, that the county zoning drives us, but maybe we want to look at some of these and pick a couple that we want to focus on. And I just think that would be a really good thing to do after we have kind of the reorganization.
Yeah, I think that's gonna do too, because we don't just do, like, right now we need to finish up this town zoning before, because, you know, it's due two thousand twenty-seven, and so is the town plan. So we have that obligation, but we always add, we always add other things, we have other goals.
Right, right, you know, we could have somebody, a facilitator with us, and we could just, you know, go through it, like, what are our priorities this year? What is, what do we really want to focus on, and then make sure that we get to it.
And I know Erin is the new person at the regional, and she's in charge of the housing, and she met with Rose and I about doing like a, she's talked, talked about a Saturday, we were, you know, we're trying to figure out when that would happen, sometime in April. Just have a big thing here and invite the whole town that wants to come and give them food and just to talk about housing, what are your ideas about housing, what are your needs? You know, what do you, what would you like to see in the town? And we have, before we've done stuff like that, like whenever we, last time we worked on the town plan, we got some direction by having one of those community meetings, and we had pizza, when you have pizza, everybody comes. Yeah, we had people out the door, standing room only, before we embarked on the new town plan, the last time we worked on it.
I'd rather get some engineers to give us some actual factual data on how we can address some of these floodplain issues. Um, you know, and say, hey, we're, we're working on designs that are gonna satisfy these restrictions in the areas that we have. Right, like, you know, we need engineers, though, you need to hire, you need, you need to hire people that have stamp, this, you can build this here. This meets all the flood rates, this is, this is a spec type, the spec type of construction that works in your downtown area. You know, expanding our development areas, or coming to the realization that there's not, there's not a huge development envelope left in Ludo. Right, so, you know, there's, you know, we have these streams of hundreds of affordable housing units, is that, is that actually feasible? Like, a deep, a ser, a serious question, like, we, we can, we can push for it, we can want it, but where is it actually feasible? Where can it physically be done, in, in real, in the real world, not in what we want in our desires? Right, so, because I think a lot of this, we get bogged down in what we need and what we want, but the reality is some of this stuff might not be possible. So if it's not possible here, can we foster it somewhere else? Can we, now, maybe we're talking, well, hey, Chester, it's pretty feasible. Maybe we start talking about transporting people, how do we, now how do we work here to get people to Ludo from Chester? You know, there's, I, I think we need to start thinking outside the box a little bit, if, if that's what we truly want, but we, you know, I'm a data person, I'm a reality person, and I've asked Jason, a number of people, what kind of building can I build on the floodway? No one has, in years, has been able to give me an answer to that question, and it's because no one has hired an engineer to answer the question.
Well, see, that's what's.
Did you say floodway?
Flood, so in any, so.
Brian, did you say floodway?
Yeah, so any, any, and so in the flood, is there any building that can be built in the flood, in any way, in the flood hazard area?
Flood, well, flood hazard and floodway are two different things, so if you look at your zoning book, especially the village, it has that, that graph or whatever, or the, um, the word, where it tells you this is permitted, this is not permitted, this is a big X. Well, when you talk about floodway, that the big X is in floodway, meaning that, um, you can't build anything.
Yes, I'm, I'm aware, but outside of the floodway.
Yeah, you have floodplain, and you can build in the floodplain, you just have to be one foot above base flood elevation.
Oh, two feet now, when our, our new stuff goes through.
Oh, that's, that's why you need an engineer.
Yeah.
But I, I think that, um, I, parking, you would, you, I would have thought, you know, a couple of years ago, well, that would be a simple thing, because there are these.
well, that would be a simple thing, because there are these places where you could create parking. It may not look like what you have now, but wow, all this is possible. But here we are.
Yeah, still talking.
Four, five years later, and we still don't have parking. And I'm in favor of spending some time to look at the town plan, revisit it. But I think that the, we need direction and we need to be supported by the select board so that when we put all that effort into it, that it goes someplace. Because we've all been part of this long enough to know that sometimes you could spend hours and hours and hours and it's like, uh, it didn't go.
Do we want to have an agenda, agenda item every month that addresses somehow one of those issues that we want to bring up? That's not part of town zoning or town plan, but.
I, I think it's, I'm, I'm okay with that as long as there's a path after we've had the conversation and come up with some constructive things, that there's a place for it to go.
Yeah.
That it doesn't just get stopped there, that it continues. I don't know how that happens.
Well, we got to figure it out. Um, I wanted to say that Justin, Justin is somebody who communicates with me. He called me last week and said, he has some ideas to make the village more pedestrian-friendly. Said he's seen a lot of near collisions with pedestrians and with cars pulling out of Abishans and, and made a mountain and him almost getting hit crossing the road and stuff. And he has some ideas about that, but I told him it wasn't on our agenda for this month, but I told him I would put it on there for next month. He has some really good ideas. And then it would look like an ordinance and not a, something that we would have to follow through on. We could just, after we talk about it, if we have things, I could just go to the trustees and bring it up. And then they could decide if right or ordinance or not.
So I think, I think the biggest, or my thought is the biggest issue with that piece of one oh three, down right, bridge to bridge, is the state road.
He says it isn't. He said, bridge to bridge, the town has to control over.
Of all signage.
Yep, he said that between bridge to bridge, the town actually can control the speed limit. Between, he found that out. He's done his research. That was one of his ideas.
So we could put up.
What's the farm bridge? Um, this bridge and the pleasant, I think it's the mill bridge, yeah. Between that and that, we could lower the speed limit to twenty or twenty-five or fifteen or wherever. But we can't, but the village trustees could pass an ordinance to that. That was one of his ideas, but it's not on our agenda, but I, I thought we could hash out his ideas and then bring them to the trustees.
I think, yeah, looking at overall traffic flow and traffic patterns and, you know, I've, I've been saying, I've been saying that for a long time.
Yeah, we've talked about this with that when we had.
Yeah.
Yeah, Erin on the board, he did a lot of research and basically got shot down.
Yeah, which is a shame.
Yeah, because he worked very hard. Yeah, we don't measure the streets and stuff. Erin, um, is this last name? Gally. But he had some other really good ideas. I won't bring them up here, but. Citizen comments, um, Mr. Alvin?
Oh, I, I do, I just want to wrap up.
I just want to give it another chance.
Sorry. Um, the, the other, um, the other items were uh, village revitalization master plan. Um, I think this connects with a lot of pieces, pedestrian flow. Um, you know, touched on it before, we have Potbelly vacant. Um, just a lot, you know, the old Mojos, American Pie building, movie theater. Um, that is sitting vacant. Um, like we, you drive into town and it's not the Ludlow that I think we all picture. Um, for visitors, it's a very, I think it's a, a different site. Um, it's something that, that I hear from visitors of like, oh, there's, all these restaurants are closed down, all this stuff's happening. And not that that is directly, um, our problem or, or anything, but um, I see that as, as a potential and, and right in there is establishing a funding source for that. Village revitalization. And just to kind of wrap things up, like I definitely don't want to, uh, feel like I'm coming in, you know, from the psych ward, hey, you know, we need to do all this stuff. It's something when I was on the TV station board, spent two years on this strategic plan. Next year, didn't even look at it. You do all this planning and, and stuff just gets, comes at you. I think, you know, Jason is coming with all these grants and these things, which is great. Um, but making sure it doesn't lose focus on what, um,
Our goals are.
The goals are.
There are projects that we can work on that are funded by Ludlow.
Yeah.
You can choose that. Like, you know, not everything we work on has to be part of a grant. And I've thought that for some time.
Yeah, and I think it's, I, I am very interested to hear from, you know, you guys have been doing this for a long time, you know, much more than I do of like, what do you, you know, what do you need, whether that's direction from the select board, whether that's, hey, we really need a, uh, a town plan, like that is key to this success and that's what, you know, we can't do this. Um, I saw in the, um, in the, um, your rules and procedures like committees, um, you know, is that something where, hey, we're gonna, you know, establish some committees to, to work on this stuff? You know, I feel like the, um, you know, sometimes the select board can, you know, jump onto things when, when it's not necessarily, like I saw in your short-term rentals programs. This is back in twenty eighteen, that conversation was happening. Um, you know, maybe that should have come from the planning commission. Like, hey, we want to form this committee with the planning commission and we'd like the select board to put it together and we're gonna come up with this plan and presenting it, um, to them. Um, I definitely would, um, as a select board member, you know, love to take these ideas and like, hey, here's exactly why we're doing it, you know, and, and if it needs to be, hey, we need funding for this, you know, for this to move forward. Um, you know, have them us shoot it down or, or say, hey, yes, let's, let's do this. Let's invest in it. You know, we did it with the grant writer. Um, and I think this stuff right here is, these are items that are an investment, but will be a return for the town, just like your grant writer, where, yeah, we're gonna put some money upfront for it now. Um, but that money's gonna come back. Um, so I am here to support and, um, relay any needs um, that we have. So I think there's definitely some items that you guys created back in twenty eighteen that can, can get it.
So I'll just share my, my mentality as being an appointed member of this board by the select board is that I serve at the pleasure of the select board. That's, that's my, that's the way I see the hierarchy. So I would love for these questions to be posed to the select board and say, maybe we need, we need to add to our agenda, okay, what, we need to have directives, you know? What directives do we want to issue to the boards that are working on our behalf? You know, as opposed to just appoint the board and kind of, all right, we're done. You know, and I think that would be very beneficial because then we would actually have, you know, backing of the board, financial backing of the board, you know, because everything costs money. No, no matter what, I don't, I can't leave my house and I'll spend a hundred bucks, so, I don't know. But, you know, so if we want actual answers and we want results, it is gonna, it is gonna have to be funded, but it needs to, but it also needs to be, um, directed. You know, that's.
Well, another idea Justin had was, um, the, the mill, you know, is going for a buyout, the mill at the end of Mill Street. And his idea is to somehow fast-track that so they get the buyout and the town owns the land. You know, tear down the mill. It's definitely got some hazardous waste in there, which is something regional, every, regional meeting I go to, we have a whole section that's all about giving money to Windsor and Springfield to clean up their hazardous waste. And so, you know, Ludlow could get a little piece of that by and get that demolished and cleaned up. With that, they have millions from the federal government. Hopefully they still will, but, um, to tear it down and turn it into a green space for the town.
For floods.
Yeah.
Is that a brownfield?
It's, I, it's definitely hazardous waste. But that's something that, regional, they pay for the whole thing. Or sometimes there's a match, but a lot of times it's just a grant. Sometimes it's a loan, a really low interest loan, like zero interest or two percent or something.
No, 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 thank you. I, I would, I would love to say, I would love to hear from the select board, planning commission. We want you to, we, we want a change in our traffic patterns. But is there a want for that?
Well, there, there has to be the commitment to parking. I mean, in order to change that traffic pattern, you've got to have parking. And that's not new. That's.
Oh, parking, but I, I mean.
I, and that's something I have never had an issue with parking. Maybe it's because I'm okay parking at the discotheque and walking a little bit.
Yeah.
Um.
It's an issue for handy pappy folks. We don't have.
We have no handy pappy spaces on Main Street.
Only the bank and shots. That's it.
That is something that should be addressed.
Genius brought up over and over and over.
Yeah, and like even, I mean, I've, I've mentioned before, like narrowing streets. What would it look like? And not that you need to take anything for snowmoo, but what if you had somewhat diagonal parking?
It's, it's, there is, there is a whole, someone has spent the time to give an example of what that would look like and what that would say. So a lot of probably what we might want to talk about might already be available.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember that.
Yeah, Erin came up with, Erin measured everything, came up with diagonal parking on one side of the street. And he had all these great ideas, but they got way shot down by the, uh, the road crew and stuff. Well, like, I don't know actually who shot them down, but.
And I'm gonna go back to it. I still think we need to, as a group, discuss what our priorities would be for the upcoming year. You do it for every year. Because if, if you just do it really newly, it's not gonna hit them. That's how I feel, you know, like I could, I have lots of ideas, but it never comes up in our conversations.
So do you want our next meeting to just be about that?
Well, I think that just.
Pick, pick a. Because nobody's gonna pay for school to do a retreat.
I think the, I think the select board needs to give the direction so that we aren't disappointed after we.
Well, this is how we purpose this conversation with you, because you guys have always asked me for direction. Here's some direction for you.
And I think like, or maybe it's a joint meeting with the select board and say, okay, what do we want to work on for the upcoming year, but just. And what are you gonna support after we do it? But not, not just one thing on their agenda, but a joint meeting just to discuss that. Because otherwise.
We're not gonna head on. And the trustees.
And also meeting at five in the afternoon till eight o'clock at night, if it, if it takes that.
That's what I'm saying.
Time to, to do it. Um, I mean, I, just based on what, what's listed as goals on that thing, I think there's a bunch of stuff that, you know, I, I see a lot with housing where like the state wants it, town wants it, but it's so painful to get through and to promote. Um, you know, I think like very basic, um, you know, we had it with, with the building that I purchased here on Main Street. And not to discount planning office or anything like that, but basically we went in, it's like, it's gonna be really hard. And, you know, we went through process, went through the, through the town to, to guarantee our, the parking spaces that we own. We went through, found these, um, state tax credits, which Ludlow is a downtown village historic center. These, this tax program exists. Why not having just some of the documentation? We didn't even come to talk about it. Here's all this stuff. Here's, here's the VIGA program. Here's, here's these kind of things. Would that be so simple? Um, and not that it doesn't take work and like Rose is saying, all these, the, um, the flood hazard stuff, it's, it's really hard, not impossible. Um, so I don't know where else to go with that, but, um, I think the, I, I will definitely be going to the next, um, at our next select board meeting and, and, you know, um, mentioning this stuff. And, you know, I definitely have some of these items that I want to hit. And if anyone else has any specific things that, hey, we would like to focus on, um, can present that to them and, you know, get some, get some direction. Because I know that they are, um, open to that. There's a lot that comes at them. And I think proposing like, hey, this is what we want to do. And like getting that backing, um, is much easier to, when you go present it, this is what you tasked us to do, is you, you sign off on this, um, you know.
Which is what we do with any agents.
Yeah, and having me as a liaison, I will, part of my goal is to give an update on every meeting. Like, this is where we're going, this is the direction, and get a sense of, of where we're going.
So, and I'm just reflecting back before I was on the board. But I saw the planning commission do a lot of work. And the, the trustees need to be on board too. Because many times I've seen this board go to the village and it didn't pass. They couldn't even go any further. So, so it's important that everybody's on the same page.
I'd say the board is a lot of there.
Maybe when the vote happens, it, it'll change, but right now there is one.
Also on April seventh, besides the public hearings, we're also, I presented our stuff on short-term rentals to the trustees at their last meeting in April seventh. It's gonna be in the select board's agenda. And hopefully, if those trustees didn't make a motion or anything, but hopefully, you know, that happens in the select board, that someone makes a motion to create an ordinance. Marcus sent ordinances for Windsor, no, from Chester and from West Windsor. We're gonna take a look at. Okay, are we all?
Thank you.
Eric, did you have a burning desire?
I did, but I'm gonna table that, um, because this is, this is a really good conversation. And it's funny that, that Noah, he just sort of stole off my thought that I wish I had gone first. But I also read through the town, twenty eighteen, nineteen town plan. Because at the select board meeting is really where I was gonna speak, you know, to this. And there was a lot of goals, some, you know, some folks put a ton of work into that. And they set all these goals, and if there's fifty benchmarks, none of them have been met. They put timelines on all these, and none of them have been met. So we say, well, we had a pandemic, we had a flood. I said, all right, let me go back to the town plan before that, take a look at that. Fifty benchmarks created, very few of them met. So it's been a twenty-year-plus, you know, cycle of making these goals of what people want, but no action. You know, really need to focus on the things that have moved the needles for this town. Housing, jobs, welcoming in businesses, like Noah said, and, you know, development, like Ryan was mentioning. Create a welcoming, all right, uh, if someone's looking for a business, think to yourself, why would anybody want to come here? And sort of start from there. Why would anyone want to move here with their family? If you can't answer that right away, then, then that's a problem. Why would someone want to start a business here? If you can't answer that, there's problems. You need more businesses. You need more residents. You got some things going against you. The, the, the population is aging in the state and in this town. The population of this town, you're losing population every year. Vermont is, is number one in the U.S. for losing its college grads. That's not a good combination for any town. So really, a lot of the stuff that this board, and you know I say this board is the most important board in any town. A lot of stuff that, that comes across this table is really minutia that doesn't move the needle in any sense. You work on it for two years and it's done and it, and it does nothing. You know, to, to move what you really need to focus on. And all this conversation tonight is what needs to be focused on. You know, I'm, I'm gonna say the same thing at the select board. Look at the big picture. You know, the town operates in like a, it's like they're afraid to look past six months. All right, six-month increments, six-month increments. Look past it. This stuff takes time. Nothing is gonna happen overnight. But we can do housing here. It's difficult, but it can be done. Let's look for those ways, create ways to, to invite these folks in. Okay, this is the way, you want to build something here? Come in here. This is what you need. We need this, this, and this from you. We're gonna help you with this, this, and this. Businesses, no problem. We'll find you a space. We have this space, this space, this space. We're gonna help you market. We're gonna help you get through the planning process. We're gonna help you with signage. That's, that's what sort of brings up, you know, the village. It's really, the village means like just an uplifting, you know, just really to revitalize it and, and make it, you know, that's great for everyone. It's great for the residents, it's great for the visitors. You know, really, let's, let's really work on what, what is gonna move the needle over the next year.
Here, we all said? Yeah, I, I really want to keep her, our downtown is. Yeah, I, I really want to keep our vibe, our downtown as vibrant as possible. It's, it's so nice to hear somebody bought the pub and, or at least in the process of it, that they're, they get tearing it down. Hanging a restaurant and housing above or something like that.
And one closing thing, I'll just kind of, to relate to the select board, is this, in every town I work in, and this has been the environment in Vermont since probably the beginning of time, is that fiscal conservatism. And Vermont has really, I think, its history is that of tradition. And tradition is, it's strong, right? This is every town I work in. The tax environment in the state has forced municipalities to become very conservative fiscally, because with taxes being so aggressive, they, they just think, we can't increase our municipal budget a penny, or, you know? And so now you have municipalities that are, are literally failing. You know, we have capital budgets that we just, well, had to go buy fire trucks, we never thought we'd ever have to buy them ever again. But that wasn't because of that, obviously we knew we'd have to buy them again, but it's because the town's like, hey, we need to try to balance this book as best we can. And that's where the revenue streams come in, for the municipality. So I think with that, it'll offset some of the burden, you know, of we can't raise the municipal rate because the education rate's so high. That's the way every town in the state works. The towns are going, town buildings are falling down because we pay so much for education. So with new income streams coming in, new mentalities, you know, thinking of more efficient ways of doing some of this stuff, I think would be really beneficial, and the realization that a municipal budget increasing five to nine percent a year is, is, that's health, that's probably healthy. You know, especially where the municipal budget in this town has been so bare bones, let's say. And, and rightfully so, but at the same time, that does damage, and that, and that damage, it, it creates stagnation. Um, so I think with, again, auction tax, that's great. You know, coming up with new, and, you know, new ideas to gain revenue, so that we can attack these projects and do them meaningfully. And not have everybody worrying about, oh, it's gonna cost vibrant, you know? Yeah, and that's, I think that's been the biggest, um, logjam for not just Lublow, but all, all municipalities throughout the state. And the municipalities that have cleared that logjam, they have went full, full bore with economic development coordinators. You know, they're going out, they're, they're fundraising, they're asking for donations. You know, they're going out looking for alternative revenue streams. You have some municipalities I work in, you have town managers selling, selling, buying and selling real estate on behalf of town. Like, you know, it's, again, these are things, it's, it's out of the realm of ordinary, but there's things that help the community be able to, uh, you know, fund and actually follow through with everything that we're talking about. So that's what I, I think we're moving in that direction. I think the select board really needs to, um, kind of a, a, address that, you know, and understand that, you know, that municipal budget, yeah, we, we want to be smart, we want to, we want to be tactful. But at the same time, there can't be this, this notion of we can't, we can't raise it by a penny. We, we, that's not healthy either. You know, those fire trucks are gonna cost us a heck of a lot of money, a heck of a lot more money now than they would have if we'd been putting away money for the last 30 years. You know, that's damaging, so that's all I, but yeah, I'm optimistic. I'm sticking around.
Did you have a motion to adjourn, or else some talked out? Second?
Second.
All in, any discussion? All in some favor?
Aye.
Good luck with the slate, guys.
Aye.